The wording that she oversees you, I mean, how would that make you feel?
And I get that. It should be in conjunction with, because we're going to be in conjunction with, you know, the office holders. The office holders, they run their offices and the human resource is an aid to be used in that. So, yeah, and with the wording, I too.
I mean, it's to the point that you want employees to be treated fairly, or the same as what was stated last meeting, and that's where you guys are creating such a division with office holders to the board and to the, you know, and it's nothing against them personal, but you guys are creating this animosity between us. And that's why all the public's here. It's to the point that we can't run our office and do our jobs when you're putting on paper that you sign that they're our supervisor and they do our discipline.
Yeah, and it should be in conjunction with.
So are you fixing it, doing an amended, or, I mean, what's happening here?
I will say, yeah, I will look at that, because I do agree with that. The office holder is the office holder of that, but also it's in conjunction with the human resource to help with the.
But it's already been put out there and all the public sees it, so, I mean, it makes it look like that, I mean, Terry, myself, Scott, I mean, all the, that we're not even competition running our own office.
No, and I get that, and I get that.
Why did you sign it?
Well, Danny, it under statute, I have, in my office, I don't know about the others, I have complete control, internal operations, and it's in statute. So whatever that contract says, it has no bearing on what I do.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I will say, yeah, but if it creates confusion, Sheriff, then we need to look into it. And I agree with that. And I'll be, and I'll be the first to, we need to look into that, because if it creates confusion, it shouldn't be there.
Right.
And I just want this all employer, so, I mean, I'm different even from the other offices anyway, but I've been saying it, it would be a faceless slap in the face that you guys would agree as Board of Commissioners that we voted you all in, the same as we were voting in, that you guys would actually sign a document to this nature and put it out there.
Can I understand that?
When it's not true, it's a false statement.
It's, yeah, misinterpretation.
A false statement. Supervising disciplined departmental administrators, as again he said, it's in statute, that is not true.
Just one last statement, and I can understand, I've done a lot of contracts in my time, that some things can get passed. One problem is if you have that in that contract and you can't do it, such as in the sheriff's position, if you don't have a savings clause in that contract, that contract is null and void.
Thank you.
That's why I was trying to bring it to your attention and let you know that that's how it reads. That's the intention.
Yeah, and appreciate it. We'll look into it.
I mean, we're not, we're not perfect, guys.
All right.
And, you know, it's a learning process every day. So again, I appreciate your confidence.
So if you revisited, is it would be null and void? Is that something you would reconsider as to take the raises out, to possibly save other positions, if it would be null and void, because if it wouldn't be, oh, okay?
No, we're not talking about taking away the raises. It's two different subjects.
Well, no, they're not.
No, not when we're trying to save the employees. You're keeping your employees. That's not, it's not two different subjects. We're here to fight for our people and we have to have jobs done in our offices, too.
Tiffany, was I correct, or was, is there a job description of the human resources in that contract?
None of her duties were listed. It actually states, I forgot it. Anyway, it stated that her duties are listed as follows.
Guys, no.
Duties and responsibilities are listed, and there was none listed.
Hold up. In the meeting, public cannot talk back and forth to each other.
Okay, well, I'll ask you then, Max. In her, in her job description, unless I missed it, there was nothing. It says duties as follows, and there were none. And I just want to have you sign a contract like that. Maybe that wasn't the final contract.
I don't know the exact words, but it says something about duties as described in her job description, what she does.
The exact wording, duties and responsibilities are listed.
And they weren't.
She does have a job description.
What's it say after "are listed"?
They are listed in the, that's, it just says duties and responsibilities are listed, and then it just goes to the next bullet number.
Oh, it doesn't say "are listed" in the job description?
No. It was, it says duties, duties and responsibilities are listed, and then when you go through it, then after that, there's nothing listed. It just goes to the next bullets, which are the same as yours.
Has anybody read this contract?
Just to reiterate, I really think the board should set aside a day or a couple of days for an in-service amongst themselves to develop a working organizational structure. I've also heard the word "discipline" by people that I would question whether they have a right to issue discipline. The evaluation process is at the department head level. That is passed on to the individuals that are responsible for discipline, i.e. the commissioners, unless it's an elected official. I really think by getting this all together so that everybody understands what the rules are, HR, every personnel file should be in the HR's office. If you have a personnel file in somebody else's office, you are in trouble, because that can be altered to the detriment of that employee. So there is a reason for these things. But I think, and I really respect your desire and transparency, and I think you need to go forward with letting everybody know, this is the way Union County operates, very clearly, very succinctly, and I think we can eliminate a lot of these tit for cats, which mostly, I think, are out of misunderstanding.
I agree.
I also agree.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Terry, I'm sorry.
There were a couple of things that were said. This does not concern the budget, does not concern the positions, but I do want to make a couple of clarifications. One of those that Commissioner Feller addressed was about non-employees getting insurance when they shouldn't be getting insurance. The first thing I want to ask, I want to ask this of our human resource director, because she, she is the person that should be able to answer this question. When you have an employer, normally when a benefit is given to an employee, it's given to all employees. Is that usually correct? I'm not talking about a contractual benefit. I'm talking about a benefit such as health insurance, dental insurance, whatever.
It would be offered?
It would be offered to all employees, not just a certain group of employees. The reason I ask this is because when Commissioner Feller stated that there were non-employees given insurance, these non-employees were retired employees that were offered, retired, offered dental insurance, not because of my office, which Bobby was the county clerk at the time, and I inherited that, but it is my understanding that we had two different hospitalization, health insurance plans in the county. One was at the highway department and one was for everybody else. The highway department's plan included dental insurance in the plan, it included vision insurance in the plan, and it included the health insurance in the plan. The insurance plan for the rest of the employees were just health insurance plan, and they had additional plans set up for health insurance and dental, I'm sorry, for dental insurance, and then the vision part was, I think, a $200 payment that the county made. So what I'm suggesting, or what I'm thinking has happened here is, and we've been through this because there was a press release on it, that I was not very happy about, and still not very happy about, but we'll not go any further with that, but the reason those employees were given those benefits, those ex-employees, not non-employees, they were retired employees, were given those benefits, is because someone told the county clerk to get those benefits. I don't, Angie doesn't, Angela doesn't, go out and get benefits unless we are told to get benefits. So I am sure that when Mr. Tolbert, which is now the chairman, was the county clerk, first gave those benefits to those retired employees, it was because the retired employees of the highway department were receiving those benefits, such as the dental insurance, the health insurance, and the vision. Now, we never have given vision insurance to anyone. I don't know about whether that was still available for the retired, but I know the retired from the highway department got dental insurance and health insurance. So those employees that were retired deserved, my limited knowledge of human resources and the way employees should be treated, they should be treated equally in the benefits, unless it's stated differently in their labor contracts, that those retired employees should have been offered that, or given, not given, they should have been offered that dental insurance to make their plans that they had as a retired person equitable to what the other employees were getting. Do you understand what I'm saying so far and that?
We do.
So the retired people and their incumbents, re-stating in, not non-employees, they were retired employees. It wasn't somebody that was working, had never worked for the county before, had just worked for a year, or whatever. These were retired employees that were paying into the health, the retiring health plan that were given this. Now, I'm going to admit that there were some discrepancies, there were some, maybe mistakes, let's put it that way, there were some mistakes, but one individual that was called out, that I actually, said he was getting free insurance, I contacted that individual and he sent me canceled checks that were written to the county, because I wanted to know if he was given free insurance. I contacted him, he sent me canceled checks that showed he'd been writing those checks and they had been cashed by the county for that insurance. Now, I don't think it's fair for Alex, for you to say that there is employees, non-employees, have been given benefits when they weren't given benefits. There were payments made for those benefits. Now, like I said, were there mistakes made? There could have been. I'm not saying there wasn't, or there could, there could have been mistakes made. But I have an employee that has went around and around and, in essence, has been harassed over a period of time because of this. And I don't agree with that, and I want that known to you guys. Again, and you know how I feel about it, because I've talked to each individual ones of you about that concern, how that was handled. The second thing I want to address is Angie, Angela Koch, our county administrator, stated that Kelly Carter saved the county $100,000, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, on liability insurance.
I don't know the exact number.
Okay. Saved the county by contacting, going the self-insurance route and doing this. I'm not, I'm not one to stand up and say, pat me on the back, I've done this. But if I'm not mistaken, I'm the one that went to the county commissioners and introduced SNC risk management to the county and suggested that they're talking. Like I said, I'm not one to want to be patted on the back, but I do take offense to something when I'm involved in something and then someone else takes credit for it. And I'm not saying I was involved in the negotiations, I was not involved in any of that, but without me to begin with, Kelly Carter wouldn't even know who SNC risk management was. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the last meeting, you said that the treasurer's office would be losing a full-time going to one part-time. He's got a part-time person, but then he's also got another part-time person for an additional five months, which basically...
Which I said was for tax season.
He's not really losing anybody. It's two part-time people, right?
Well, yes, the one is for tax season, but that eliminates us paying benefits for the meeting part-time. So it's a big savings as far as our budget is concerned. Do you have anything else, Angie?
No, I was just going to ask Terry, when you were saying that, as far as the county highway people getting, were they paying for their dental, though?
Their dental was included. It was part of their health insurance plan. Their health insurance plan was, and I can't give you the exact dollars, but at the time, their health insurance plan was costing around $800 a month for those employees to have that insurance, and the employees' insurance up here was costing $500 a month. So they weren't equitable in what plans were given to who. The highway department, when everybody else went to the $500 a month plan, the highway department said, no, we don't want to do that. We're staying with the state, I think it was a state plan at the time. And they said, no, we're going to stay there, and it cost the county an extra $300 a month for each one of those employees, because they decided they didn't want to go to the plan that the rest of the employees were told to go to. And that included the dental part of it. The dental up here was an additional plan. Delta Dental came in, and we got an additional plan for, this is, now, this is the way it was explained to me, because they had it in theirs, we got an additional plan up here to make it more equitable, because they didn't have it. They'd got it down there, but nobody else had it up here.
But when they retired, they were paying their own health insurance. So in theory, they were paying their dental insurance, because it's all together.
That's true.
Where I just want to make sure, everybody knows, what was, what was discovered was that as far as non-highway employee retirees, we had some that were paying, some paying the correct amount, some paying a very old amount that hadn't been changed since they retired, as one of them wrote me a letter to say had never been changed since they retired, and some that had never paid, that had been on insurance for multiple, multiple years, and never paid a dime. So there is difference.
That information was never, never given me. And I said, I said there may have been mistakes made. I'm not saying that there wasn't. Not saying there was, not saying there wasn't, but there may have been. But I was never given that information, and when this all started, I actually had to foil you a request, and you're aware of that. I had to foil you a request to get the information that should have been readily available to me as a county official, to find out what was going on, because nobody would talk to me about it. All I knew is, is one day Kelly Carter said that there's something going on with the Delta Dental's not being paid right. Nobody came to me and said, here, we see, no, somebody's not paying, or this is not paying. And I go to my employee and I ask specifically, are these people paying? And I have answered, yes, they are paying for it. I still am not seeing anywhere, and I'd like to see it if somebody can show it to me, that somebody was not paying. All I've heard is hearsay that they weren't doing it. And like I said, I had to foil you for that information about the receipt. And what I got was a stack of emails, this thick, that were, can't think of the word right now, what they're actually called, but, where the emails go back and forth between a person. So I would get to see the same email 15, 20 times, but I read through that whole stack in order to determine the information. And the information that was in that stack, there was a lot of, that was not true. I know for a fact it was not true. And that's why I contacted one of those individuals that I was told was not paying for insurance. And then when I contact them and they say, yes, I paid for it, I said, can you actually send me your canceled checks that you were? And he literally drops them off to me, copies from the bank, that show where he paid his payments. Then there's something wrong. I mean, at that point, I was very concerned, because at that point, I was, had just run for election or just getting ready. I don't remember the timeframe of when that took place, but it was very disappointing to me that we were all trying, and what everyone was saying was, we need to work as a team. And we had found mistakes that were being made throughout the county. And what we had done at the time is fix the mistake. Not point fingers at somebody, fix the mistake. But when we found this mistake, one person took it on themselves to contact the television station, the newspapers, and everything else, and put out a press release, and I'm not, these gentlemen had nothing to do with that. They actually knew nothing about that. But it was one other office holder that did that, even though we were trying to work as a team at the time to try to fix what was wrong. But when it came down to, when there was a problem that was found, that my office needed to have something fixed, it was brought out in the public. Now, that's, I'm not going to say anymore, that's enough.
I just have one thing to close with, and I just want to say that as a county, like Terry said, we need to work together as a team to do the best interest of the county. So I feel that was a very bold statement that Alex did make, as far as that there were mistakes made, as why payroll was taken. I'll be the first to say, if we're going to call out some, I mean, you shouldn't be calling out any of them. So, I mean, for him to call out, saying that a certain office made mistakes as to why something was pulled, our payroll hasn't been correct for many, many pays, as me with my paycheck. Christmas club, extra Christmas club's been taken out, where it has to be fixed. My union dues for all the staff has been incorrect. The certain tax, when it was changed, has been incorrect. So if you're going to say you're taking payroll because of a mistake, then you need to look at your human resource director.
And what I was saying about the dental was not supposed to be a comprehensive list, it was just to be one example of what we were.
You said it was a mistake, though, is why it was taken away. So then maybe you need to reassess then what you hired. That's all I'm saying. Because if you're going to justify a mistake, there is mistakes throughout the county that everyone does on a daily basis. So don't call out a mistake to one office, but not to others.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say it was specific to any office. I meant generalities.
We knew, I mean, they were the only ones that did payroll. I don't do payroll for the county. So, I mean, everyone in here knows who did the payroll and who you took it from. So if you're going to call a single office out, then you need to look at your other offices, who's doing the mistakes on the payroll now.
I didn't hate them.
Everyone knew who you were talking about. I mean, they're the only ones that did payroll. But you still insinuated there was a mistake. So.
That's fair. I've actually, I've got one, that's okay. Pardon? I've got one more thing to say, if that's okay. To Kevin's point, Tiffany, did you feel insulted when I made things?
Extremely.
Okay. Publicly, if I insulted you, I need to publicly apologize, because it wasn't my intent. I was trying to express I disagreed with you, and I needed to take a different way to do it. So I apologize. I think that these meetings these last two weeks have been really not fun for anybody, but extremely necessary for our county. And if we lose the respect that we have for each other, it's over. So, bottom of my heart, I don't mean any disrespect towards you, I mean it. We're going to disagree about a lot of things. These five people will disagree, office holders will disagree. I get that. If we lose respect, we're done. And so I need every office holder and every person who works for the county here to know that if I disagree with you, I still respect you. We're going to have different ideas to get to the end goal that's best for the county, and that's something we're going to have to live with. But Tiffany, I mean, no disrespect to you. And thank you, Mr. Stock, for pointing that out.
Thank you for the apology.
Yes, thank you.
And that's the case. I mean, apology, I wasn't laughing at you. I was, I was laughing, period.
I understand.
I don't think you owe me an apology. I just, I did, I didn't mean anything by it. All right. Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn.
Do we have any other public comments?
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think I know probably everybody in this room. I might stay along the formal thread with Union County Economic Development. Stephanie Cox was here. She was going to make the presentation. She had an appointment she had to get to. I also have board members, Martha, Ken Pennant, and Alex, who are on our board. What I'd like to do is, first of all, just make a comment, what a meeting to follow, to be the last guy on the stage. But I'll try to interject some positive things, I think, that Union County Economic Development wants to propose and talk about going forward, what we're going to be doing for Union County as a whole. I've been involved since, with Union County Economic Development, since about 1991. So, other than just a few people, I'm one of the older members on that board. The Union County Economic Development was developed at the time when Traskraft and Buddy Redd was closing. The economy in Union County was in the pits, just, but luckily. A group of men and ladies and politicians came together at that time and formed the group to move forward to address economic issues in our county. Over the years, they were very, very successful. After Buddy Redd and Traskraft closed, it was shortly announced through the Springfield Corrections Office that there would be a new prison, possibly in the south, or somewhere in southern Illinois. A core group of, just a few names, Don Denny, Lee Royer Rennelmann, Mike Boss, various other politicians, started meeting at the Old Vino's every Monday to talk about a plan. I'm not going to bore you, most of you know that, what that's about, but I'm just giving you some history of what we tried to do. Union County Economic Development's always depended on donations. We've never, we have gotten funding, at various times, from the county. We've gotten funding from the city of Anna. We've gotten funding from the city of Don, and so on. We've never had a hard plan on how to fund our group. In today's world, we're missing opportunities to get business into our county. When I hear about the concerns about what's happening here and the office holders and struggling for dollars, and what we know what's happening in the state of Illinois, we as a county have to find alternative means of revenue, whether that's increasing taxes, and no one wants to hear that, that's an alternative, increasing sales tax in our county, getting more grants, whatever. Those things don't fall in your lap. If we're ever passing a quarter percent referendum for sales tax increase, all those things have to take. Ken is on our board, and Ken has some real good ideas on things like that. Long story short, Bobby came to us about six weeks ago. Bobby attends our meetings fairly regularly, and Bobby asked what we needed, what could be put in the budget to potentially help Union County Economic Development, specifically asked me and a couple of our other board members. We at that time had no clear direction on what we were going to do. We used to always have an executive director, and over the last four years, we have not had an executive director. An executive director, many of you are aware of the CEO program. Our executive director brought that to our group. We were the organization that brought the CEO program to Union County. That program is training young people to stay in our county and be entrepreneurs. They are extremely successful. We were the third county in the state of Illinois to adopt that program. With that said, we're looking at what we can do as Union County Economic Development to go forward to get another permanent-type person to be out there fighting for us. We have around us, we have Redco, which is Winston County, we have Redco. We have many, many groups that are out there daily, 40 hours a week, within the business of going out and fighting for business, and helping existing businesses. A prime example is Master's Choice. Master's Choice is a multi-county company in southern Illinois. A story came about that they might possibly be looking to change in their corporate headquarters. In one of our meetings, Candy Eastwood, who's with Shunkman College, heard about this. She mentioned it, Richard Cunningham, at that time, the chairman had to be in our meeting, on our board, and Richard said, I know them personally. I'll start a conversation with them. So he did. And here we are today with cooperation of the county board, the city of Anna, and some other entities. That office is in Anna with, or Union County hiring jobs to continue to expand. So we need, working with the, I don't have time to do that. I should have time, but I don't. All of our board doesn't have time to do that. Where I'm going with this, we need, we need an executive director. Our executive committee met this week, and we're going to take a very, very aggressive approach to getting, to doing, going out to other economic development groups throughout the state of Illinois that are comparable-sized counties to Union County. We know we can't be what Jackson County is. We know we can't be what Woods County is, but we can be what Richland County is. Richland County's a county very similar to Union County. There are many counties in the state of Illinois that have economic development, full-time directors. We have to have that. We have to. There are just no, we'll always be what we are if we don't move forward. Jack was walking my pageboard in about 1974 and said, suddenly you've got to spend money to make money. And believe me, that's the truth. So here's what we're asking. We failed to get on your budget for this coming year. We would like to ask for consideration to put a line item in at that item. We would like to ask for consideration to put a line item in at that item, and it's horrible, we bring it up, we're, we're, we're cutting people in offices and things, or we're chasing that around. I understand that, I've been in big business. Those are not easy decisions and I respect all of you for making those decisions at your heart. They have sometimes, and most of the time, they have to be made. But what we're asking is that you consider us before Monday for a line item of $10,000 to help support Union County Economic Development. It's not only you. We're going to go to this very city organizations. Many of our corporate sponsors have already chimed in on this. Our funding has come from Cook Sales, BT Simon, Antioch Royal National Bank, and State Bank, Capaha Bank. We have some very, uh, southern Illinois local co-op. Many of these entities have given a large amount of money over a long period of time. And again, we're, we're able to sustain ourselves. Today, we are not. We do have a nice little chunk of money in the bank, we're totally committed to dumping every dime of that money into this project. And hopefully, we can come to you with a plan, a hard plan, by the first of December, by the time budget time comes again and say, okay, guys, here's what we've got, here's what we're going to do, here's what we're going to produce. So we're asking for seed money. I know it's, it's a horrible time today to do that, but we felt it's necessary to make you aware of what our plans are. Any consideration you can do, we would appreciate it, but that's what we're asking today. So I appreciate your time very much. If you have any questions, you can contact any of the board members. Uh, I have a list of our board members, I have your history of giving, if you have those types of questions, but that's what I'm asking for, that.
Appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you very much.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Stay. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.